Hello and welcome back to my ongoing coverage of the Ocean Gate Titan Submersible Tragedy. This video will conclude the testimony given at the U.S. Coast Guard's public hearing by Phil Brooks, former Ocean Gate engineering director. If you haven't seen the first half of this testimony, I recommend going back and checking out the previous video on my channel so you will be up to speed. This video continues with the questioning into Titan's real-time monitoring data as well as the sub itself. It also goes into various issues at Ocean Gate and Mr. Brooks's opinions of them such as financial strain, safety, and at some points Stockton Rush's influence. As usual, I will save most of what I have to say for the end of the video. So for now, I'd just like to thank you all very much for clicking on this video. It is greatly appreciated. Now, let's just get started and hear the second and final part of Phil Brooks's testimony.
I was wondering if I could actually just go back a little bit and make a comment about that Dive 80 that I had neglected to talk about earlier. And Stockton did make a comment or, you know, discussion. We had a discussion about the cause of this loud bang. And he thought it was the frame adjusting to the sub so that as the, and really I think about it kind of the other way around. But as the, as the sub goes down, it compresses slightly in size. And then as it comes back up and as, as the sub compresses, the frame does not because there's no air cavity anywhere. Because the sub has an air cavity, it compresses down a little bit. And since the frame is hard bolted to the rings, as it comes back up, that the frame may have sprung slightly and then it adjusted back to its original shape. And that was Stockton's theory of what, what that bang was, was the frame readjusting back to its original shape. So I wanted, I wanted to, to make that clarification. And in addition, along with, as I said, that within dives 81, 82, 83, that we didn't, we didn't see any more abnormal strain and AE data or, or any noises, any loud bangs. So that was, that was the other, the other reason for continuing ahead.
Commenting on what Stockton Rush stated to you, is it possible that the hull moving in its cradle or frame had been a secondary reaction to something else that happened versus it being the causal factor?
That would, that would be speculation on my part, and it's, it's difficult for me to speculate on that. It's possible, but it's hard to say for sure.
Lieutenant Steele, can you please bring up Exhibit 77 Dive 80? So, Mr. Brooks, we're looking at page three, which is the Channel 2.
Okay.
As you described earlier, I just want to confirm, the large acoustic admission between 15 and 1600, is that what we were talking about with the large acoustic admission?
Yes, yes, the bang.
The bang?
Yep.
And then Lieutenant Steele, could you move to page eight, which is Channel 7? So again, between the time of 15 and 16, there is a large acoustic admission. Is this also consistent with the data that you had looked at?
Yep, you know, that's, that is a full amplitude AE spike, correct.
Had you ever seen a full amplitude spike in any previous dive in 2021 or 2022?
There may have been one or two going up and down the ramp, but I'm not sure if they were, if they were, they were full amplitude or not. The only time that I had seen a full amplitude spike like that would be in the third scale tests and the Titan One tests where we had real problems. So it was, it was unusual to see, see something this high, yeah.
Lieutenant Steele, could you please move to page 14? This is plot of Group 4 strain gauge data. So we haven't really talked about strain gauge data. So when, when you get there, I'm going to ask you just to explain what, what you see on the screen. Mr. Brooks, could you just please explain to us what the green line means and what the purple line means in front of you?
So the, the green is the strain gauge in the axial direction and the purple, excuse me, the green is in the radial direction and the purple is in the axial direction. And then the blue line is depth. And the, the scale on the left-hand side correlates to the strain millivolts from the strain, the strain's hardware. And on the right side is the depth. So the, the blue line should correlate to depth. And as you can see, it peaks at about 3,800. And the, on the left side are the strain millivolts. And so this starts at the beginning of the dive. And as we go down in depth, you see the, the movement of the strain gauge or the movement in that area of the sub. And then coming back down, you know, it correlates quite well with depth. And of course, we have this, the shift in, in that same spot. And that's probably what you are calling attention to, correct?
Yes, before that, just to confirm, so the A in the key on the upper left-hand side, that means axial?
Correct.
And R means radial, which is also hoop stress?
Correct.
Or hoop strain in this case?
Yep.
Thank you. So Lieutenant Steele, if you could zoom in between that 15 and 1600 time. So you're talking about the shift. So you see the shift in both the axial and the hoop direction?
Yep.
Had you ever seen a shift in the strain gauge data prior to this dive?
Not on the full-size hull, no. Only, only on the third-scale hull. And we, we may have seen it on the full-size Titan One test, but that I can't remember. But, but definitely on the, on both third-scale hulls, we had seen shifts like this, but they were much larger, sometimes deflecting the entire page. So, so yes, that's, that's the only time I've seen that, had seen that before, yeah.
For Group 4, I just want to confirm. So earlier we talked about Exhibit 058, which I believe is still in front of you. We believe that Group 4 is in the forward port side of the submersible?
Yeah, there, I, I think that there may be another layout guide, but that is probably correct, but there, there may be a, a more accurate layout guide that maybe could be referenced to know that exact location.
The document you provided us earlier, that AE Max plot on Day 3 of the deep ocean testing facility, this I think would be also consistent, if you have that in front of you, with it being the forward port side?
Uh, yeah, let's see, Day 3.
Can we maybe get another copy of Day 3, just so we're all looking at the same thing?
We're just talking about the actual locations of the strain gauge. So I don't believe it would have changed.
Yeah, oh, I see, yeah, yeah.
So just don't worry about it. Mr. Brooks, are you looking at which day are you looking at from the test?
So we're talking about Group 4, correct?
Yes, Group 4.
Yeah. And where this gets, can get a little bit confusing is that there were some changes made to the, the strain layout. The AE gauges were the same, but the strain layout was changed because for the regular dives, we did not, we had, for DOTF, we had strain gauges out on the viewport. And then those were, those were removed. And so after that, we had all the strain and AE gauges together. And I'm quite sure that somewhere there should be an accurate depiction of what all the groups are after that, after DOTF. And that would be, it would be good to, to find that document. And I, I can probably go through my notes. I'm not sure if I have that with me, or I may have, I have my computer here. I could probably dig that up to get an accurate location of where that is. Because it may not be, I know the DOT, like I said, the DOTF, we made changes to that because we removed some of the sensors from the front. And so the groupings may be a little bit different. So I think it's, it's probably good to be, to be, have some clarity on that.
Yes, if you could find that, we would appreciate it.
Yeah, I will absolutely produce that, yeah.
Lieutenant Steele, if you could just bring back Exhibit 77 and move to page 15. Mr. Brooks, this is for the Group 5 strain gauges. I'd like to bring your attention to the shift in axial strain between the 15 and 16 time.
Yep.
And to confirm, you were, you were aware of this at the time and you had brought this concern to Stockton?
Absolutely, yes. Yeah, we reviewed this in, in a lot of detail. These, this was the, these two strain plots were really the, the big part of what we went over after that, after that issue happened, yeah.
Are you aware of anyone else other than yourself who brought up a concern about this data?
I know there were other people that were concerned about it, that there were people who were in the, in the sub when it happened. I believe Scott Griffiths was in the sub and some of the other mission specialists. And I was, I was not involved in the discussions between Scott and Stockton. I don't think Scott was in, in our discussion, but they were, they were concerned about it, yes. And I know they did talk, but I'm not sure exactly what the outcome of that was. You know, if, if Scott protested or if he agreed with Stockton on the, on the theory of the frame. So, but there, yes, there were other people that raised concerns.
And in your opinion, was there anybody on board the Horizon Arctic, or Horizon Arctic at the time that was well-versed in strain gauge data and carbon fiber that could interpret this data?
Other than, other than Stockton and myself, probably not.
Going back to Stockton's theory, was there ever a time that it happened previously where there was a bang, where it would have adjusted and then readjusted once it surfaced?
I don't remember that. I do know that when they dove Titan One, that there were noises, but they, those noises were on the way down and at depth. And those were consistent with carbon fiber, you know, snapping. It's a, it's a little bit different sound, but I do not ever remember a, a bang on surfacing. So, yeah.
My final sets of questions are related to the storage of the Titan between 2022 and 2023. Where was the Titan submersible stored during that timeframe?
So it was stored on the dock in St. John's, next to where the Arctic Horizon was docked.
Did it ever move inside or was it outside for the entire season?
We moved it inside in February of 2023. I believe that was maybe around the 10th, 10th, 11th, but I'm not sure the exact date. But somewhere in early, mid-February, we did crane it to the Marine Institute and we put it into the ROV shop at that time.
Was any maintenance completed on the Titan hull between the expeditions of 2022 and 2023?
Not on the hull, no. That all of the work that we did, it was, it was really mostly the work that, that I had done and it was on software. It was on thruster software and other, other software, battery charging systems and that, that sort of thing, but not on the hull.
And Lieutenant Commander, just for the record, Mr. Brooks left in February of 2023. So I'm not sure he would know if anything happened after that point.
So my next question is going to only be related to the time that you were with Ocean Gate before you departed. Before you departed, was there any testing conducted on the hull between expeditions 2022 and 2023?
No.
My final question is, why did you depart Ocean Gate?
So the decision had been made to, and there were, there were several things, but really the main thing was that the decision had been made to not use the Horizon Arctic, to use the Polar Prince and to tow the sub behind the Polar Prince. And it would require, when we were on the ship in 2021 and 2022, there was constant work, almost 24/7, except when they were diving on the sub, some kind of maintenance or troubleshooting. And we, you know, we worked very hard on trying to keep things as best we could. And so this would have required us to work on the platform either while it was being towed or while we were, you know, we were anchored or, or in, in position. And the seas are, you know, one to five-meter seas and the platform bobs up and down. And I just did not see that I could do that, that, and/or I did not feel right that other people who were working for me would be required to do that. And I expressed that to, to my manager, Bob, Bob Schuman. And I, and the reasons were, you know, economic reasons. And I suggested that they, they not go, you know, that they, that it was just not a workable solution. And I said, you know, I just, you know, I did have another job offer, but I just did not think that I could do it. I could work on the sub and it was just too dangerous. So that was, that's really the primary reason. In addition, I don't know if you've heard that there were economic issues with the, the company asking us to forego getting paid for periods of time with, with the promise that they would get us caught up in, in paychecks, you know, after, after the first of the year. They, they asked for volunteers and, and, you know, I don't think anybody did it, but you know, it was clear that the company was economically very stressed. And as a result, that they were making decisions and doing things that resulted in. I, I felt that the safety was just being compromised too, way too much. And at least for myself, I'm, you know, at my age, you know, working on a bobbing platform was just too dangerous and not something that I wanted to do. So, so that was, that was really the main reason, that and of course, the, the other economic issues. But I, I just did not think, it just did not feel right, you know, for them to be going. And like I said, I had suggested that they not go. And they, I was told that that wasn't possible, that, you know, they had people that paid and that they had to go through with it. So, so yeah, so that was, that was, that was the reason that I left, basically, yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Brooks, I'd like to go to Dr. Kramer with the NTSB for the next questions.
Good afternoon, Mr. Brooks. I have a few questions to follow up on the strain sensor part of the monitoring system. You mentioned that, that some real-time strain data was provided to the pilot. What was the intention of that and what type of information would that provide them that they could act upon?
So it was a, it was a program that actually had been written by Mike Ferlotti, who was the person that had designed the strain hardware. And it was a graphical program that showed, I believe the way that it worked is that it would show up to eight channels streaming, kind of like an oscilloscope in real-time. And it would show the voltage change versus time. And you could, you could modify the, the time and the voltage, you know, X and Y axis. And we had used it quite a bit at DOTF to just keep an eye on, on the hull to see if things were moving. And by using this program, you could kind of get a feel, and we used it also quite a bit with the third-scale testing, you could get a feel for something that was normal and abnormal, that when you could see a certain amount of, of Y-axis movement in time, then, you know, there's clearly, clearly something wrong, that for the most part, they were, they were steady with the, with the depth profile, of course, the change with depth.
So if you had personal experience with the system and if you had been part of the subscale testing, then you would be able to rely upon your previous experience with the system to evaluate the meaning of the, the strain values. So, but for a pilot who had never attended that testing or had been a part of that, what would be the expectation for like, what kind of value that would have delivered to them? And what would they have expected to be looking out for and what would their response have been?
Yeah, that.
Excuse me, could we maybe establish what pilots were present for the DOTF testing so we can answer your question? Or at least you can ask Mr. Brooks?
Well, okay, then, what pilots were present at the DOTF?
So Stockton, who was the main pilot, was, was present at the DOTF testing. And like I said, when we did the third-scale testing, we broadcast the real-time strain as well as the real-time AE data for Stockton. And I, I do not know if Scott, Scott Griffiths, who was our other main pilot, had much experience with this program. I, I don't believe he did. But I know Stockton had quite a bit of experience with it. And so he, you know, he would have been able to get a feel for, you know, some kind of abnormal activity. You are correct, it did require some resident knowledge, you know, some sort of empirical experience with it. And it did, we didn't really have, there may have been some general guidelines about the, a certain change in voltage versus time that, to look out for, but it wasn't, it wasn't formalized in a manual.
And so just to maybe be a little more specific, abnormal activity would include nonlinear strain behavior or sudden jumps in strain?
Correct, yeah, correct.
So with the, the strain monitoring system, what type of maintenance or pre-dive inspections were completed on that system?
So the, the strain system unfortunately was difficult to really do much in the way of testing on. After we put the insert on, we had a really difficult time accessing the strain sensors. So as you can probably tell, there was, I think Group 2, those, those strain sensors fell off and the data from those is just all noise. So after, after we put in the insert, we really had to rely on just the dives to show that, oh, yes, they were working. And really, the main test was to see how well it tracked the depth profile and performed like the other dives. For the third-scale hull, and when we initially installed them, I did a temperature test. That was, that was my test because it's, it's hard to flex that big giant hull or even the, even the third-scale hull. We, we did have a test jig that was a, a separate piece of carbon fiber where we would, you know, bend it and test the, test the hardware that way. But once we got them installed on the hull, then I used like freeze mist on the sensors to show that they were actually working because they're temperature sensitive. And so if you spray, it's, it's a electronics, like troubleshooting device. It's a, it's like an aerosol can and, or you can do it with compressed air. If you turn it upside down, it, it sprays a freeze, like a freeze mist blast. And I would spray it right on the sensors and we would see a deflection in the temperature or in the, in the amplitude.
Just a couple more questions. You mentioned that after a dive, you were the first to look at the data, but you didn't, well, I didn't hear you say exactly what your responsibility was in the analysis of that data. Did you have specific tasks that you were responsible for? Or was it really preparing the data to deliver to the other staff?
Basically, yes, that, I mean, I, I had some experience from doing the third-scale tests and DOTF to know what abnormal, especially AE data, AE and strain data look like. But really, my main task was to just get it out to everybody as soon as possible to make sure that the, the plots were done correctly and emailed out to, really to as many people as possible, as soon as possible.
And so I, I know we've talked about your qualifications to evaluate that data. Did you have any concerns about the qualifications of Ocean Gate to evaluate the data?
The, the fact that maybe we didn't have a, like a independent consultant review them. I know in the past, they had, they had had some people, but on the ship, we didn't, you know. Now, they were emailed to Bob and I don't know if he, he showed them to anybody, but yes, that, that was a concern of mine. And I think that at some level, it really just required myself to research it, dig deeper and research it and read the white papers and research how strain monitoring was done and just get as much information as I could to make, you know, to make the best analysis that I could, so.
And one, one more question related to that. After Dive 80 and the loud bang event, was there any discussion about reaching out to an external laboratory or contractor to maybe do a deeper dive on the stress strain and acoustic emission data?
Uh, no, there was not. That, at least I, you know, I didn't, that may possibly Bob did, but I know that I, I didn't. You know, I just discussed it with Stockton and he said, oh yeah, it's, it's probably the frame. So I think, you know, if we had seen some more abnormal data on the next dives, it probably would have been, you know, a much more serious issue and we would have done it at that point, but, but we didn't do it after Dive 80.
All right, thank you. That's, that finishes my questions.
Mr. Brooks, I just have a couple of follow-ups from the initial questions. Did you agree with Mr. Rush's assessment that it was a frame shift that probably caused the loud bang?
With, you know, without being really a qualified mechanical engineer, his, his explanation sounded plausible. And I had discussed it also with the previous Director of Engineering, Dan Scoville. And he kind of confirmed what Stockton had said. And so at that point, it seemed, it seemed like a reasonable, reasonable explanation and, and fairly plausible. So I, you know, I didn't see issues on other channels on subsequent dives. So, so yeah, that, you know, my feeling was he was probably correct on that.
I think you, you mentioned that you were going to use subsequent dives to kind of assess if that Dive 80 anomaly was a problem. Were those dives considered to be conducted without passengers or was there any consideration of doing like an unmanned test dive after that event?
I don't think so, yeah.
And was the next dive with passengers?
It was, it was, yeah.
Do you recall between the 2021 and 2022 seasons, if the insert was taken out of the Titan during the maintenance period?
It was not, yeah, that we, now, I could be wrong. I don't believe it was. In, in my recollection, I do not remember the, the insert being removed between 2021 and 2022.
Was the Titan hull taken back to the Everett facility during that timeframe?
It was, yes.
And sir, I'd like to talk about the screens available to the pilot during the excursions. If the real-time monitoring system was not called up, would it automatically pop up if there was a yellow shift or a red shift in the system?
So if they were not actively monitoring the strain, then no. The, the only thing that they would see would be the AE data, that the AE data, we had a, a channel that would send the AE data to the control program. They were two separate programs and they communicated via network. And so the AE hit count total would, would be broadcast to the control program. And that's where they had a, a hit count and then a, a green, yellow or a red indicator. And then we also had an alarms, we had an alarms screen. It didn't have audio alarms, but it had other, like alarms, like motion control alarms or compass alarms. And it would, it would go on that screen as well. But it was, it was on the main, on the main screen that was visible at all times, the AE hits, yeah.
So just to clarify, if you did get like a red alarm, that would always show up on the main screen?
Correct, yeah.
Sir, you mentioned some degradation in the sensors. Do you remember what timeframe that began to occur?
So are we talking about the strain sensors or the AE sensors?
Sir, I'd like, I actually both.
Both.
Yeah, when, do you remember when each started to degrade?
So the, the issue on the strain sensors with Group 2, that actually happened, I believe, right away. I think what had happened was when they were installing the insert, that they bumped that, those group of sensors and knocked them off. that, those group of sensors and knocked them off. So that was, it was really kind of a, like a installation error where some wires, wires got knocked off or hit. And so that was, that was the main one. Now, for the AE sensors, the, the degradation that you're, you're talking about was really mostly that we had problems with electrical noise and that certain channels would get bursts of electrical noise that could interfere with the AE data. They were relatively low amplitude, but that started, it started towards the end of 2021, but became a gradually, gradually worse problem, really towards the end of the, excuse me, towards the end of 2021 is when we first started seeing it. And this is from my, my memory. And then during the 2022 dives, that, that got gradually worse. And the, the AE plots can be reviewed and I think it was Channel Six, I believe, had problems with AE, with electrical noise. And that was the main degradation. I didn't see, you know, with my, with my ping tests, I, I didn't really see decreasing levels of AE amplitude from my tests, that the rest of the sensors seemed to be, seemed to be fine. Not that they were, you know, they didn't seem to be wearing out or anything like that. For the strain sensors, I really can't, because I didn't really have a good comparative test that, I don't really have a good answer for that, that they, they seem to produce pretty reliable data most of the time, yeah.
So thinking back to the sensors that were likely knocked off during the installation of the insert, so that would be before the 2021 mission?
Correct, yep.
Did you raise any concerns to Mr. Rush?
I did, I did. And I raised concerns to the then Director of Ocean, of Engineering. I was not the Director then, I was just a, a software, software engineer. And, you know, I was really not happy that this happened. And I was told, we, you know, we can't, we can't pull the insert now. We've got to move forward, we're running late and that we, you know, we can't fix it. And I was, and I also, I wanted to go back through and recheck everything and I was told, no, we, we don't have time for that, we don't have time to pull the insert. So we'll just have to live with what we have. So I did raise concerns, yes.
Do you remember the other Director of Engineering at the time?
As Dan Scoville was the, was the other Director of Engineering at that time.
Mr. Brooks, Commander Whalen had a couple of follow-up questions, sir.
Okay.
Recorder, could you please bring back up Exhibit Number 66? And this is the real time monitoring data from Dive 77 through Dives 83. 77 was on the 8th of July in 2022. And Mr. Brooks, when you, when you initially had, had saw this layout, you knew that it was a shallow water dive, correct?
Correct.
And on the second AE sensor, which is the second page, or sorry, the second graph in the center at the top, what do you believe that those, those purple points are?
So I think that the issue here is the, is the scaling and that it probably, that, that particular plot is, may not be scaled the, similar to some of the other plots. That, that, that was an issue that I had finally kind of corrected later in 2021 or early 2022. Because if we, the way that you can tell, on some of the plots, I allowed auto scaling. And that, so the AE data then would change from channel to channel. And the way to tell is if you look on the left side of the plot, and there should be the, the maximum AE amplitude. Unfortunately, I don't see it on this plot and so we might have to replot this. I do have the data and I can, I can replot it and get this answered definitively, that I think that is the issue. Because you're seeing a, quite a, quite a high number of AE data, quite a, quite a large amplitude of AE data. And it may be that it's, it's actually quite low, but it scaled to the, to the level where it looks high, but is, is probably pretty low. That's, that's my, that's my feeling at this point. And I think the, the best way to answer this is maybe to, to replot it, take a look at the data, replot it and then, and definitively answer that. And if not, then, then maybe there's a further explanation. Was that your concern?
Not really, sir.
Okay.
So my concern is, so if you look at 2, 4 and 6, they're very similar. 1, 3 and 5 are also very similar. 1, 3 and 5 aren't showing virtually any data.
Yes.
And then if we go to Dive 88, I'm sorry, blame my last, Dive 79?
Oh, 79?
Yep, apologies.
Okay.
The next, just the next page.
Yep.
Again, 2, 4 and 6 are showing similar spikes in the acoustic emissions, whereas 1, 3 and 5 are also not showing any data.
Yeah.
And then go to the next screen, please. Again, this is similar as the other. Whereas this is where we have the spike or the loud bang noise. 2, 4 and 6 are showing that definitive noise, whereas 1, 3 and 5 aren't showing any noises. And this continues through Dive 83, which is the last data that we received regarding the acoustic emissions. Is there any explanation as to why 1, 3 and 5 are showing zero data for all of the dives on 2022?
Well, I believe those channels were working from my tests. And it could be that they were just in a part of the hull that was just a little bit quieter than, than the rest of the hull. That was, that was something I had observed, that some parts of the hull just were quieter, but that the sensors seemed to be responding. So that, that would be probably my best answer to that question. Maybe it, it bears out some further research on these plots to see if there's, there could, maybe could be a, another issue. Obviously, we don't have the sub now, so we can't go back and, and look at the actual sensors or the hardware. But that's, that's sort of my feeling, that they, they probably were working, there just wasn't as much data. And it was maybe more related to the placement of those sensors as opposed to the, like, you know, if they were working or not.
So back to your, your ping test. Can you explain, can you describe to me how you conduct that test and then what does that data show?
So like I said, it's, it's a, it's a, like an impact pinger. And what I would do is ping at, you can't ping the carbon fiber because it will damage it, it'll poke a hole in it when you don't want that. So I had to ping the, the titanium ring in the front and in the back. And so I would, I would depress the pinger and it, it's like a snap, a loud snap. And if you want, I can, I can maybe make a video of this process.
No, sir, that's, that's fine. So you would just ping the forward titanium ring?
Correct.
And then you would, on the acoustic data, you would see that noise in one area throughout all of the monitors?
Sometimes you would not see it on the, on the sensors that were furthest away from it, that you may see it only on the sensors closest to it. And then, then you'd have to move to the back ring and do it in various places to test all of the sensors. So, so that, yeah, you had to, you had to move around a bit.
And are the, the sensor numbers, are they in a relatively sequential from forward to aft?
Yes, and, and that actually is, is part of my other notes that we talked about earlier is to get an accurate document that shows the sensor placement. But typically, yes, the, the forward sensors were the low numbers and the aft sensors were the high numbers.
Mr. Brooks, you stated that during the build of the Titan hull, after the third scale testing, things were done differently to the full scale hull to include smoothing out the hull and erasing the imperfections. Can you explain what that means?
So I wasn't personally involved in this process of doing this myself, but when we built the third scale hulls, one of the biggest problems that we had was that if there was an imperfection, especially at the start of the winding, that, that imperfection would, would amplify towards the outer, outer windings, that if it was a small bump or wrinkle, that at the outer windings, it, it would get quite large. And apparently, this is an issue with, with carbon, carbon fiber winding. And on the first third scale hull, that, oh my gosh, there, this wrinkle was, was quite large. And when we tested it and it failed, it failed right on this imperfection. So we knew that, okay, we, we had to solve this somehow. So when we started doing the multi-cure, then what was done was they would do the first layer and then cure it. And then we had a group of people with, with Sanders and built a, like a tent and they had to dress in, you know, very protective gear because the carbon fibers is, is dangerous to breathe. And they would, they would sand down any, any imperfections, any sort of blisters or anything like that and smooth it out as best they could. Like I said, I wasn't involved in actually doing this process, but I know, I know that Dan, Dan Scoville basically had come up with this method to do this and it was done for every layer, every, every, at every multi-cure layer, which I believe was five layers, that they, they did this smoothing out. And, and you could see it when, when they finished, before we put the end caps on, that you could see, like if you looked at the cross section of the layers of layup, with the, with the third scale hulls, you could see those bumps and you could see them kind of amplify. And with this method of smoothing out the, the surface and then doing the next layer, you could see that there, any imperfection was not in the next layer up. So there was, it did not transmit or, or pass through to the next layer.
And how would they remove these imperfections?
Just by sanding.
By sanding down on the carbon fiber?
Sanding, sanding down the carbon fiber, yes. With the, I'm not sure what type of, it was a, obviously a power sander. But they, yeah, they would go, go over the whole thing and sand it down.
This is my last question. You had stated earlier that the one-third scale models that were created by Electro Impact were not, they were not the same layup as the full scale hull?
Correct.
Was there any discussion to do a third, third scale model and to the, what the specifications of the full hull were going to be?
That was discussed from the very beginning, to do a multi-cure third scale. And that, that kind of, and I was not the person involved in this, in this, in this discussion or in this, I want to say conflict or argument of to do it one way or the other. But as I understand that Dan very much wanted to do it and Stockton did not want to do it for, for cost reasons, that it would be too expensive and was not needed. When it, when it came time to do the full scale hull, Stockton did not want to do the multi-cure. And I believe that EI said that they would not build it, they would not build it without doing a multi-cure, that we, you know, we had to do it that way or take it, take it someplace else. So that was, you know, that was kind of end of discussion at that point. But I know that, that was, that was desired to be done from the very beginning, to do a multi-cure third scale. And it, it kind of proved that, yeah, you have to do that, you know, for, in other word, in order to get it to work.
Mr. Fawcett?
Thank you. Keith Fawcett, Mr. Brooks, thanks for being here. Did you put any of your safety related concerns regarding the Titan or the Titan operations in writing to any Ocean Gate person that worked at the company?
I'm sure that there were emails that were, that addressed some of these issues. The, the, the final conversation at the end where I was leaving the company, that, that was a phone call, so that, that was not in writing. That was, that was a phone call between Bob Schuman and myself. But I'm, I'm sure before that, there were, there were emails about things like AE, you know, AE issues and so forth. But I, I'd have to go and review the emails. They were, you know, maybe not as quite of grave safety, but, you know, we should be doing this and, you know, this is something that we should, should address differently and so forth. So, but yeah, the, the final, you know, towing of the sub, that was, that was a phone call that I had with, with Bob Schuman.
And then while you were working at Ocean Gate, do you know if the liner was ever pulled from Titan so that the interior of the hull could be inspected?
Yeah, the, on the inside, you mean?
Yes.
The insert, that, no, that was not done.
And you mentioned the cure and, and the blisters. In your experience, are you talking about blisters being voids in the material, like an air bubble or pocket?
Um.
And just for the record, Mr. Brooks has testified that he was not part of this process.
Yes, sir. And I don't know that you said blisters. Is this the sanding you referred to?
Yeah, I think it was more imperfections such that, and I don't know why this happens, that the EI, the Electro Impact people that wind the hulls, they probably have a better explanation as to why you get an imperfection. But as you start going from inside out, if there's a small little deviation in, in the winding distance, say, for however that happens, at the very inner layers, it's tiny, but it amplifies as further out that you get, I guess because the, the carbon fiber strips lay up so tightly and closely that those small, small imperfections get amplified as, as you go out. So it's maybe not, maybe blisters was not the, the right thing, but, but, you know, minor imperfections tended to become major imperfections towards, towards the outside of the winding. So those, those had to be smoothed out before the next, the next layer, layer of carbon fiber was, was applied.
Thank you, sir.
And I did, I did want to mention one other comment in regards to safety. And I do know that there were many emails about this and it's related to the drop weight motors. And there was a, a strong desire on my part, because we had problems with drop weights in 2021, to use, you know, tested, made for deep ocean rotary actuators for the, for the drop weight motors. And I could, I could not get Stockton to, to agree to that, that we, we had other actuators that we had built and he, he wanted to use those instead. So, and we did get those to work eventually after changing motors, you know, changing the interior motor, because it's a, it's a oil filled mechanism that is under, under pressure, under a lot of pressure. So, but I had, I had absolutely wanted to use a off-the-shelf rotary actuator for deep ocean. And they were very expensive, they were, you know, about 10,000 each. And so he, you know, he was not going to do it, said, you know, no, we're, we're not spending that money on, on this. So that was, I know that, that definitely should be documented, documented in emails.
Mr. Brooks, I just have one follow-up. Do you know of during the curing process, was that done in a pressurized chamber or a regular atmosphere?
I don't think so, but again, I, I was not involved in that. Was it, was it a pressurized autoclave or a one ATM enclosure? And I believe it was a one ATM, but there, that, there needs clarification on that. It was done at Janicki, I know that. But I don't know that answer definitively, so, you know.
Thank you, sir. Understood. At this time, I'd like to go to Ocean Gate Counsel.
Sure, thank you. Mr. Brooks, you mentioned the drop weight system and there has been testimony during this hearing about changes to the Titan sub made between the first hull and the second hull. Other than the carbon fiber hull itself, were there changes or improvements made to other Titan systems after 2019?
There were, there were many, many changes. There were, there were many, many changes. The, the actuators for the drop weights and the V, the variable ballast tank were, were changed. The, some of the navigation systems were, were actually quite a bit different. On Titan One, they had an off-the-shelf BlueView navigation system, INS, and that was, that was returned to the company. And then we used a separate, we used a device called a DVL, which is a Doppler velocity logger for ground navigation. And then we, we used a separate compass. So those, those systems were different. The systems that were the same, the sonar was the same and the cameras were the same. Some of the lights were the same, but many of them were different. The software was completely different. That was pretty much completely rewritten. Interior lights were different. The, the interior was completely different. The Titan One interior was, was plywood and painted black. And for Titan Two, Dan had, it was like a anodized aluminum interior that was custom-made. So the interior was completely different. The batteries were the same. The pods were, there were slight modifications to the thruster pods. Those are the spheres that are, that are, have the motion control items or motion control components in them. The thrusters were the same. The controller, the actual controller, it was, it looked similar, but it was different. So that's, that's kind of the laundry list of things that had changed.
Thank you. Mr. Brooks, you mentioned that after dive eighty, you did not observe abnormal strain gauge data on the subsequent dives, dives eighty-one through eighty-three. Did you observe any concerning acoustic emissions activity on those dives?
No, I did not.
And you testified that the threshold level for acoustic emissions was set at 5,000. Is that accurate?
Correct.
And what is your view as to whether that was a reasonable threshold based on the information you had at the time?
So that, that threshold level was determined after quite a bit of testing, the Titan One DOTF testing, and then the third-scale model testing. And we felt that that was, that was a pretty conservative number. When we would typically see a large amount of AE activity, they were, it was usually over 20,000. So, and I, I believe Stockton had, had lobbied to have it more like 10,000, but we, we backed that down by 50% to, to 5,000. So, so yeah, we sort of determined it empirically over time.
Thank you. I have no further questions.
Mr. Brooks, I just have one question to follow up. Over time, it was my understanding that during the later dives in like 2022 for Titan, that you would not want to see any noise, you know, at depth. And on the charts that we looked at, there was some acoustics, emissions being made.
Yeah.
Was that a concern?
It, it was becoming a concern, especially on, I think that's channel four. And it was, it was noise in the area of concern as, as it was going down in depth. And what, and this was something I was, I definitely talked to Stockton about. And what we kind of decided was, well, it was under, I think it was under the 5,000 threshold or maybe just barely over it. But we, you know, we hadn't seen that on 2021. And so I think the, the plan was, you know, to really keep an eye on that and other channels and see if, if things got worse. So that was, that was the resolution for that, for that issue.
Would it be accurate to say that from 2021 to 2022, the acoustics increased?
Yes. Yeah, that, especially on that channel, yeah.
Mr. Brooks, is there anything that you'd like to pass to the board that we may not have mentioned that would be helpful to the investigation?
I did want to just clarify that I do owe you the document that shows the correct placement of the group's AE sensors and the strain sensors. And I also have a brief statement to make. And I would like to acknowledge to the families of those who perished on the Titan on June 18th, express my heartfelt condolences to, to each of you for your loss. And in addition, I'm hoping that my willingness to come forward and appear before this Board of Inquiry will be of assistance to the Coast Guard in fulfilling the mission of thoroughly examining this issue and resolving this matter.
Thank you, sir.
So that concludes the testimony of Phil Brooks. In covering these testimonies, one of the things I have found interesting to hear about is the culture at Ocean Gate. I think the way the company operated, such as cutting ties with experts in the field and going in-house with Titan, creating an experimental vessel and so operated in international waters, and also having positions where people were so often chopped and changed, like hearing about the turnover of staff at Ocean Gate, be that people either leaving or being fired, spoke very loudly. So with the project being in-house and with Stockton Rush at the helm, we have heard about his overriding or final say in practically everything and how he wanted what he wanted, even if that meant ignoring concerns from others, whether that be regarding the loud bang that occurred on dive eighty, or David Lockridge's extensive safety reports, or the letter from the MTS, or requests for more testing, even when such requests shouldn't even be necessary, like seriously assessing Titan after that loud bang, instead of just putting more mission specialists straight back inside. And also not testing any more scale models, including one that would test the manufacturing process that would eventually go into that final full-scale hull. And the list goes on. Ocean Gate ended up operating inside its own bubble, and I think that inside that bubble, the culture bred ego, impatience, a fear of losing your job if you went against the grain, and uncertainty with a vast gap in communication from those in higher positions to those who were actually doing the work on ground level. All of these things, which were certainly hinted at when the tragedy happened, but now have been elaborated on in greater detail, were a perfect concoction for disaster. And in certain roles, those which were amongst the most important, were not necessarily filled by people who were experts. The engineering director position is an interesting one, with both Tony Nissen and Mr. Brooks, both seeming to have been learning on the job, with Mr. Brooks even admitting that he probably wasn't qualified to determine what shifts in the data he was gathering actually meant. And then also confirming what I hinted at in the last video, that his role was primarily just distributing data, with any decisions based upon it always being made by Stockton Rush. So then we get on to something that has become a main thread throughout this investigation, that being Ocean Gate's finances. Hearing that the company was stretched financially is nothing new, as we've already heard about the cost-cutting choices that were being made, whether that be steps to be skipped in the manufacturing and testing of the sub, to how the sub was treated and stored between Titanic expeditions, such as being left out in the elements, or when Titan was taken out on a road tour on the back of a truck to raise awareness of Ocean Gate and its plans, and was then left in a parking lot, all done to save costs, and something that will be covered in the next testimony, which will be Amber Bay, by the way, someone who was employed at Ocean Gate for several years. So when Mr. Brooks spoke about the company asking if people were willing to have their payments delayed, and then also asked if they would be willing to volunteer, I wasn't surprised. As for Mr. Brooks, I still feel him being given the engineering director position was more to just have that position filled, as, again, his duties were not exactly extensive and any opinions or concerns he had didn't seem to hold much weight. He, of course, ended up departing the company through his own choice, but before that happened, was still expected to be engineering director going into the 2023 dives, partly due to, I think at least, the fact that he was perhaps a yes-man, one who didn't challenge decisions made, even if he had concerns about them. I know this has been a similar thing with previous speakers, but when Mr. Brooks speaks about having conversations with Stockton Rush and discussing concerns, I do still wonder, as I said in the last video, how much pushback from Mr. Brooks there actually was. I think this was also due to him, in some ways, learning on the job, not being entirely qualified to assess possible safety issues and performing various tasks that did not involve having any input into whether or not the sub should dive. It can be a tricky one, as on one hand, you have the sheer wall that was Stockton Rush, who would disregard concerns, who was totally tunnel-visioned, and we have heard how those who opposed him would feel his wrath. Still, after now watching the entirety of Mr. Brooks's testimony and hearing about his time at the company and his mindset, he doesn't strike me as someone who had serious concerns for what was happening and wasn't hearing any serious alarm bells ringing out, say, imperfections in the sub's manufacturing, shifts in the strain gauge data, even when people like Antonella Willby confronted him about it. What he said to her after that loud bang incident was that it was only a few microns, and I think that speaks loudly here, especially now we know he had no prior experience with materials testing. Just like Ocean Gate as a whole, I think Mr. Brooks was kind of flying by the seat of his pants. Then, of course, Mr. Brooks left the company and of the reasons he states, such as Ocean Gate's money problems and him having another job offer, he also speaks about safety concerns for himself and his team regarding the change in the support ships and Titan now being towed. And this just kind of left a bad taste in my mouth, as suddenly, when it is he himself who would be affected, safety is suddenly of utmost importance. Despite what he says about interactions with Stockton Rush, it is my belief that Mr. Brooks was happy toeing the line at Ocean Gate and performing his limited roles whilst, whether it be due to lack of experience with material testing, or perhaps the overriding fear of Stockton Rush and of being made unemployed, who knows? But passenger safety was not something I heard a lot about in this testimony, in terms of the concerns Mr. Brooks had for them. So that concludes the testimony of Phil Brooks. And next, we are moving on to Amber Bay, whose testimony will also be split into two parts. And I'm glad that these two testimonies were scheduled back-to-back, as both individuals were key parts of Antonella Willby's attempts to raise concerns regarding dive eighty, where a paying customer had also raised questions. Ms. Willby spoke about the conversation with Mr. Brooks, where he told her it was only a few microns, and then also about an interaction she had with Amber Bay, who told Ms. Willby she was a problem and that Ocean Gate were innovative and cowboys. So I am looking forward to seeing how Amber Bay's testimony unfolds. But until that video, thank you very, very much for clicking on this one. It is greatly appreciated, and I will be back again very soon. Bye for now.